Mr. McCoslin, would you please call Ruhl?
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Present.
Mr. Modrak.
Present.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mr. Scialzo.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you, sir. Attempt to adopt the agenda for the business items.
Done, move.
So, move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spicuzza, move by Mrs. Ruhl, to be accepted. Vote?
I'm sorry, who made the motion, Coles?
Mrs. Ruhl.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Spicuzza.
Voting is open. Mr. McGregor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Public comments at this time. Mrs. Dobos, you able to read those?
Yes, I will. This is out here. Okay, the first one is from Amy Kierak, 5624 Maryland Drive. "I'm very concerned about your decisions regarding my child's learning path this year and in the future. Your decision to close Lincoln Elementary School for eight days, eight school days, fourteen days total, is unprecedented and detrimental to every child's learning process. This is an arbitrary amount of days the district decided on and far exceeds any recommendation from PDE or ACHD. Children of this age group live best in school with routines. They had been in the building for two weeks, four days hybrid model, and you decided to shut it down. There is no outbreak at Lincoln, two cases, both of which in your emails you state that neither person came in contact with any children. I understand time for cleaning and sanitizing, however, two weeks is extreme. We all knew the risk in sending our children to school in the hybrid model, yet it was an option we all chose for the betterment of our children's social, mental, and educational needs. According to a recent Post Gazette article, as many as seventy percent of the elementary teachers at Bethel Park want to be back in the buildings. They understand the importance, benefits, and risks of an in-person education. The parents of this district understand the risks, importance, and benefits as well. The only ones who don't seem to understand are the ones making the decisions to close. My child and my family are devastated by your abrupt and overly cautious decision. The challenges and burdens on parents, teachers, and children of constant remote learning is something this district has continually ignored." The next one is from Melinda Jerzick, 5988 Monongahela Avenue. "I first want to thank Bethel Park School District for all their hard work. I do wish to voice my strong opinion in getting my child into school full-time in person. We struggled a lot during the remote model. Hybrid has had its ups and downs. All our downs have been at home. He's unhappy and wants to be in school. He just simply can't stay focused at home. In my opinion, teachers are essential workers. Our children need them. Our teachers are being stretched way too thin during hybrid. My child is sitting and watching an empty screen a lot of the time at home. He needs to be in his classroom. I understand concerns for health safety, I do. I'm a registered nurse. I work in a hospital and I've been working the entire time through this pandemic. It was scary at first. A lot was unknown, and we made many adjustments to make sure we were safe, as well as the patients and our own families. If hospital staff, grocery store workers, restaurants, swimming instructors, daycare centers, and many more places can all be open and running, then our schools need to be as well. We have expectations and rules in place to keep the students and staff safe. Get these kids back into the classroom, please." And those are the only two comments to be read before the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobos. At this time, I'll move on to Personnel Committee, Mr. McGregor. I believe Mrs. Zundl is going to make a presentation on one of the audience's on...
Right, she's gonna begin.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to comment because it's a policy matter on number nine out of the group of personnel items. It is an item under Policy 504 of the district, which is the nepotism policy. It addresses the ability to hire somebody who is related to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, a school director, or another administrator in the district. And the item that follows number nine on the agenda is number 10, which calls for the hiring of a bus driver who is related to a school board member. So, what I'm asking the board to approve in number nine is that you found that the public interest is not harmed by hiring this individual as a bus driver, knowing that there's a shortage of bus drivers in the area, and that the nature of the position would not create a conflict or a problem under the nepotism policy. I did review the situation and do not find that it is an issue. And I do recommend that the board approve number nine before you approve number 10 on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Zundl. Is there any discussion on that matter?
I just want to be clear, we're only waiving the nepotism law tonight, or policy tonight, because it is a bus driver. In my, you know, that's my feeling. We're not waiving it for any other reason than we need bus drivers. Certainly.
The policy calls you to weigh all the factors. I think the fact that it's a bus driver is probably the most heavily weighted factor.
Agreed. I just want, you know, make it clear that we're waving, we're not waving this for a teacher, a parent, or anybody else. We're waiving this because we are in need of bus drivers, and this person is stepping up to the plate in a time of need.
Any other board members have relatives who are bus drivers?
Bring them on!
All right, no other comments? All right, thank you. Mr. McGregor, you want to continue?
Yes, now, this kind of threw me off here, so... Mrs. Zundl, you said we could do them all at once? I could present them, one through eight, and 10 and 11? Is there any discussion on any of those items?
Well, Mr. McGregor, you're going to move, I wanted to explain number nine because it's sort of out of the norm for the board, but what I would ask is that you move... You can move one through 11 as a group, unless the board, you know, assuming that the board is planning to approve number nine, which it sounds like you are.
I'd like the board out number nine and number 10. I just don't feel comfortable with waiving it.
Okay, Mr. Scialzo will hold out nine and 10. Mr. McGregor, you want to continue then?
All right, so nine and 10 are held out. How about one through eight and 11? Any discussion on these points?
Are you moving those?
Yes, I am moving those.
Second.
We have a second, by Mr. Christensen and by Mr. Nagel. At this time, no discussion? All right, we'll call them for a vote. Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion passes.
Okay, brings us back to number nine and 10?
Okay, so we have number nine, a wave of procedure, and I believe that's what Miss Dobos was talking about. So, Mr. Scialzo, since you want to hold those out...
Are you making a motion?
Am I making a motion?
Yeah, sorry.
No, I apologize, so... No, I thought we were gonna have a discussion about this.
You have to move it in, it's the second motion then.
I, yeah, I moved to pass it.
All right, we're moving, second by Mr. Nagel. Now we're open for discussion. Sorry, folks.
Okay, I apologize, Mr. Scialzo.
It was my fault. Yeah, in the past, this kind of thing has been done. I think the intent in the past was far, like, there were far worse reasons. There are definitely reasons that this kind of thing has happened in the past. And I think in this particular situation, that might not be the case. I just don't feel comfortable with ever waiving the nepotism clause. I know that, I understand what my fellow board members are saying, that we need bus drivers, and I agree, I understand. I think it just sits in my, it doesn't sit well in my gut to ever waive the nepotism clause. So that just might be my own personal opinion, and that's kind of, I'm gonna live with my vote and what I think about that. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments? All right, Mr. McCoslin, we will vote on number nine separately then, correct?
Voting is open.
For number nine?
Motion carries, seven yays, one nay, one abstention.
Thank you, that brings us to number 10, Appointment of Personnel.
Can I ask a question about this one? So... I can maybe not, I can worry that...
Oh, again?
Yeah. So if there's one particular position here that is connected to nine, right?
Yes.
But I'm okay with the rest of the positions. How does that work?
We could pull Barbara Clark out, and could we make a new agenda item, Mr. McCoslin?
Yes.
Number 11, and then 12, temporary change of assignment would end up being 12.
We have to amend the motion? Then Darren has to...
No, we could sit nine and 10 and we're moving...
11 is already been moved, make number 12, whatever it is.
Right, what you'll end up needing is another motion on the floor to appoint Barbara Clark because you're taking that out as a number of new motions.
Okay. So, a motion, be number 12 on our agenda here for move Barbara Clark to appoint her as a school bus driver. And this is in relations to number nine of waiver procedure of the nepotism policy. All the other personnel in number 10 will stay. Barbara Clark would be moved to item number 12. So when we vote on number, there's a motion, there's a second, there's a motion for that, please.
Amen.
Move, sec...
Second.
Second. Move by Mrs. Walsh Turner, second by Mr. Nagel. So at this time, we will vote on number 10, the appointment of personnel again exclusive of Mrs. Clark. Correct? Mr. McCoslin?
Yes.
You have a motion and a second for both of them on the floor. So let's start, let's start with number 10, get that done, and then do 12. Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So we're voting on number 10.
Voting is open. Motion passes.
Okay, good. At this time, this will be item number 12, this will be the appointment of Barbara Clark as a school bus driver. Again, this is in relationship to item number nine of waiver procedure for nepotism.
And the refresher board notes.
It's gonna show up as a second motion under number 10.
Okay.
Do we have a motion as second on that?
Yes, we did.
Who wants that?
Kim.
Kim and Mr. Nagel.
Voting is open.
Okay. 10 B.
Motion carries, seven yays, one nay, one abstention.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mr. Modrak. There's one item under Facility and Services this evening, it's the approval of the repair of the repair of the rotary lift for the Transportation Department. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the repair and installation of a rotary lift for the Transportation Department from Imperial Hoist Incorporated at cost of $28,565. Funds will be taken from the Capital Reserve account.
Second.
There's a second. Motion was moved by Mr. Nagel, second by Mr. Christensen, approval of the repair of the rotary lift for Transportation Department. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. McCoslin, we bring it to a vote, please.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
All right, this time, this meeting will come to an end.
Do we have one other comment, I believe?
Are we gonna do that on...
Was that for the second meeting or at the end of this meeting? Is that for a second meeting? I'm sorry, I thought it was for the end.
Mrs. Dobos, is that one for the... I think they're all about the same item, so I'll read this one this time. As soon as I can find this person's name. Jean Tupper, 1019 Center Gate Drive. "Thank you for the consideration and care that have been put into the school reopening plans put in place by the district thus far. While we are hesitant about returning to in-person instruction, our students have enjoyed the hybrid format, feel relatively safe with the mitigation efforts put in place by the district, and we as a family have settled into a routine that works. While the kids did well in the prudent period of virtual learning to start the year, they've been so happy to connect in person..." Well, I lost my place, sorry. "...with their teachers and fellow students, and have nothing but great things to say about each day in the building. However, I will have no reservations about pulling them right out if the district moves forward with their plan to return the full student body to five-day in-person instruction. It's in the wrong direction at precisely the wrong time. While I appreciate that it is impossible to please everyone right now, I feel the current hybrid format is the best option to balance the things that are most people's priorities right now: safety, quality education, and stability of schedule. As a teacher and a parent, I also think it would be unwise to move away from the asynchronous day of instruction. Students, but especially teachers, need that day to meet the many demands placed upon them with the new systems and multiple formats to manage. The hybrid system is working well. I implore you to continue to give it a chance to work for our students, staff, and community, especially as we move into the coming weeks and months with rising positivity rates in our area, family and holiday gatherings moving indoors, and the convergence of cold and flu season. The current hybrid system provides the right balance of safety, education, and stability in an uncertain time."
All right, thank you, Mrs. Dobos. That's all the items on this agenda here for the regular voting meeting. Anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Moves, I moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Christensen. Mr. McCoslin, I guess we'll take it to a vote.
I already moved, or Mr. McCoslin, I'm a yay.
Yeah.
I'm a yay too, sorry.
I moved on, it still came back.
Motion carries.
All righty, at this time, we'll move over to the committee meeting. I don't know if everyone's ready to go.
I don't see any other public comments.
All right, we move to that. So, we have any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Modrak, the Facility and Services Committee has met three times in the last two weeks interviewing four different architectural firms. Excuse me, I can't do this. Sorry. Four different architectural firms in regards to a feasibility study for the school district. At this point, we are in the final stages of that, and we'll probably have a decision in the very, very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Spicuzza. Mrs. Ruhl?
I would just like to say that we need to remind the administration and people that are involved with other special schools that our children are going to, to please coordinate the schedule with them. Like Steel Center, they have 12 schools to coordinate, so they need to know our exact schedule, like, a week before, because they need to coordinate when those students will be coming back into their classrooms, so they can make arrangements. So, if you please just keep them in mind and keep them posted. The other thing is that the AIU has discussed the diversity issue, and they will probably be hiring a person, a director, to come on board, to head up the diversity in the county. And they've already met with a education partner who is going to work with them to get funding, so we could probably see some funding coming forward as they create their program and hire their director the beginning of the year. The other thing is that we discussed at great length the technology and education and training, and what they have found, of course, everything's been trial and error, but what they have found, the schools that seem to be surviving had an implementation plan for integrating the remote learning, and the plan that seemed to work is that the teachers were trained, and then they were also given ongoing training by an educator, and then provided support by the same teachers within each of the buildings, so that it seemed like that worked better. They got buy-in from the teachers, and the teachers felt more comfortable with the technology. So that was something that was discussed at great length. And the other thing was that they are looking at cyber school to be a reality. Their waterfront learning has surpassed expectations. They had to get additional monies, so they feel that that's probably gonna be the future, and that we should be looking at all the schools, the reality of that cyber school was here to stay within our schools as much as possible. So those were the discussions that we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruhl. Any other committee reports?
Just some committee information. So this week, Mr. McCoslin and I met just to talk about the process for planning the budget for next year. And, of course, we follow similar process with it before, but what we talked about is having a committee meeting sometime in the next four weeks or so to kind of kick that off, talk about the timelines of the budgeting process and some of the unique challenges we have this year. So, I just wanted to raise that for awareness, so people on the lookout for that invite to notice that we have that meeting.
All right, thank you.
We just have to find a date, of course, you know, that it's not a regular board meeting.
Busy dates coming up.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Nobody else? Okay, at this time, before we move into the agenda, we have Dr. D'Imperio to give this little update. Dr. D'Imperio?
Thank you, Mr. Modrak. I do want to give a brief outline of our back-to-school return for the district. As you know, we do have a published plan. Our goal, understanding that situations and circumstances may change that would force the district to modify the plan. It's always a fluid plan. Our intention right now is to have our kindergarten children return Monday, October the 26th, in full. And so that is the plan for October 26th, with the kindergarten children have a full return. On November the 9th, on Monday, the plan currently is to reopen our schools for all of the students. We may not be able to honor social distancing. However, we have put separation spaces in each of our classrooms. We've divided all of our public spaces very, very well. We have done an excellent job, and will continue with cleaning. So, the point is, though, that even with all of those things in place, the social distancing aspect may continue to be a challenge, and we do want to remind parents that when our plan is announced, which should be announced in the next few days, that those parents who are uncomfortable having their children return full in-person still have the remote option available to them, K through 12. And I thank you very much, Dr. D'Imperio.
Thank you, Dr. D'Imperio. At this time, Dr. Jan Santi, since you are our chairman of our COVID Safety 19 Committee, would you be willing just to remind everybody what are the metrics we're looking at in part of our decision-making process, especially in regards to what recently just took place here with the closing of some of our schools?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Modrak. As you know, we've been keeping our eye on the weekly and daily Allegheny County numbers that are through the Allegheny County Health Department. We also have looked particularly at Bethel Park, and our numbers are very, very low in comparison to not only Allegheny County, but across the Commonwealth. So we are considering all those aspects as far as numbers go. Right now, our positivity rate in Bethel Park is .0073, which is, as you know, less than half a percent. And at 5%, between 5 and 10, we should be in the moderate range. That's the recommendation, in the moderate range, which would put us in a hybrid or in a remote situation. With our numbers being so low, we're considering that, as well as, once again, I want to remind everyone that the recommendations are in place. Those are recommendations, they're not requirements, but we certainly do weigh in on those and consider those dearly as we move forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a little bit more of an explanation on North Lincoln?
Okay, so currently, we have a closing that occurred in one of our elementary buildings. And of course, everyone knows that confidentiality of staff, and who's ill, who's not well, due to the national laws of HIPAA laws that prohibit us from identifying people, so I'm gonna say this as guarded as possible, but we did have a situation where we had a, one of our staff members who tested positive. That staff member works in several buildings. Particularly, it was our second case within the window of 14 days, and the regulations specifically say between, if you have between two to four cases within the 14-day window, you are to close between five and seven days. We've chosen to close seven days. We're not counting the Friday that people aren't in the building, but we go back to the day of when we believe the exposure occurred, that we did have some exposure with other adults in the building that would mitigate them and cause them to do a 14-day quarantine. And the numbers of folks that were involved would overwhelm our little elementary building. So that's why we chose to go the full seven days, and in conjunction with those folks that had to quarantine for 14 days and actually hit the same day, so it worked out perfectly. Unfortunately, you know, we have kids home longer than we'd like, but we still are within the regulations and the, of what we're supposed to do according to the guidelines.
When you say overwhelmed, I mean, in the context of the decision-making process, where that became important is, are you saying that we wouldn't have enough teachers available?
Yes, we would be at least...
As a result of the contact tracing, if we quarantined everybody, we wouldn't have enough staff to run the building.
That's right, that's exactly right, Mr. Christensen. We'd have at least six classrooms. We could not be able to operate, and if you combine all those classrooms together, we're certainly out of whack with everything that we need to be doing. So, we are really in dire straits as far as being able to secure substitute teachers, as everyone probably is well aware, across this Commonwealth, particularly in... as everyone probably is well aware, across this Commonwealth, particularly in our area. It's very, very difficult to find substitute teachers. So it basically, out of an abundance of caution, we are coordinating those two. One, we don't believe we could get the subs that we need, and those quarantined folks had to quarantine for 14 days, along with our, between five and seven days. We chose seven, counting the weekends, counting the days of when the exposure occurred, that we are right on target, and that's why we had to do it that way.
All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Jan Sandy, thank you for that update. I think it's something we'll probably continue as we move through this reopening plan. At this time, we were scheduled with our Personnel Committee with Mr. McGregor again. Mr. McGregor.
I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. So now, we have eight items on the agenda. Should we go through those one by one?
No, just any questions?
Yeah, we should at this time, so if you don't mind.
I can hear you, Jim.
Yes, we should go through each one, just summarize real quick what we're looking at here.
Sure. The first one is the approval of EDR responsibilities. And that's, you know, those are coaching salaries. It looks like more like the November through March responsibilities, basketball, rifle, wrestling, so. Any discussion about that?
We'll just, we'll kind of like, if anyone had a chance to scan them, you just go through leave of absence, Darren.
Okay.
We'll just jump in real quick.
I have a question about the extra duty. Is that what you said? We can ask them as we're going along?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my question is, has Whipple stated that all sports are going to continue and basketball, wrestling, swimming will continue as football has? Does anyone know the answer to that question?
I don't know if Mr. Sloan's on or Dr. Jay.
As far as I know, there is a plan to run the winter sports. The one in question might be perhaps, you know, the real close contact sports such as wrestling, but I believe they're putting plans together to try to find some way to make those athletic events occur. So from our perspective and from the PIA, we are planning to hold those events.
I was just wondering, because the one item in there, it's something about bus and lunch proctors during any period of hybrid or full in-person learning, so forth and so on, shall not extend, and whether or not for next week, we need to put something in there about if the sport doesn't occur, you know, whether we have to pay or not. So just something I'd like to be looked into before we vote on it next week.
All right, so that's something we'll have to discuss in regards to the payment if the season is delayed or shortened, because that was only in the springtime that was offered. That hasn't been approved or even presented at this time in the fall. So that'll be on discussion with the Federation on that, correct? Correct. Thank you, Ms. Sandel. Darren, we go out, continue?
Okay, number two is the approval of leave of absence.
No questions there? Next?
All right, number three, approval of leave of absence, Family First Coronavirus Response Act.
No questions there?
Maybe, maybe I do. Maybe we could have somebody just sort of explain that to the public.
Ms. Sandel?
Absolutely. The list of leaves here are leaves that are allotted under the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which was approved in March. It concludes at the end of December of this year, but it provides leave for various reasons, all related to individuals that may have a severe health condition that prevents them from working, or they are possibly caring for schoolchildren whose schools are closed. And the only leaves that are approved under that act are ones that fall within one of the categories of an approved leave, and they are extended only for a set amount of time, and the pay for the leave is dictated by how the regulations read.
Any other conversation, discussion? Okay, Darren, number four, please.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sandel. Number four is the approval of staffing changes.
All right, no discussion? All right, number five?
Number five is change of assignment.
Okay, no discussion. Number six, please.
Number six is appointment of personnel. So we have a bunch of, there's a lot of classified personnel, and so, any discussion on this?
These are all still pending, right? We're waiting paperwork back? That's why they say TDA?
That's correct.
How many of these are leave of absences? Are there any ideas?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I can guess.
Is it, does it fall apart, 50% on all of them?
Well, yeah, some of them are, some of them we may or may not be able to fill. Like, I think there's a chemistry on there, so that's, you approve some MOUs, so if we're able to fill it, that MOU will be discontinued and we'd put a chemistry teacher in there. If we don't find one, then you probably won't see this on the agenda next week. So we're still looking, and I know they're still interviewing in some of those areas, so. And some of them, we're waiting for people to complete their paperwork.
There's be some new retirements, too.
Well, what my concern is, is it may be, maybe, clarify this, if we're hiring people for leave of absences, particularly for the family first, but in general, leave of absence if we're hiring to fill those positions, is it likely that we're hiring after permanent ones those leave of absences run the course?
Mr. Naval, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. The question was about the amount of appointment of personnel positions that were to fill leave of absences and whether or not the ones that are to fill the leave of absences would, there would be a likelihood of having to furlough them once those leave of absences expire.
You mean to furlough the temporary employees?
To, well, they're not necessarily listed as temporary. We're hiring them in part-time, we're hiring them in positions.
Most of those say that it's for the extent of the person's leave through a date or whichever is less, so if you read through them, it has some fall fires in there.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
But that was one of my questions, too, is we listed those, because we don't, the district doesn't want to be in a position where we have two employees, so that right now, we're looking for replacements because those individuals are not there. However, if a situation occurs where we find somebody and they can stay, then that person will stay off, and if they come back, then it has to be understood, or not understood, it has to be a part of our agreement with the substitute that their employment then would end with the district, so it's all temporary.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Naval. Mr. McGregor, number seven.
Okay, number seven is the appointment of personnel, 2020, 2021 Alternative Education Program.
Yeah, we'll put some in a bowl, we'll share.
No discussion? Okay, thank you, and number eight?
I'm sorry, I have a little nine-year-old running around like crazy here. Number eight is the approval of substitutes.
Well, I guess, just one comment, are we going to put these on a consent agenda for next meeting?
Oh, thank you, it's a good point, and that's the reason why we could not. Any objections to, everyone had a chance to review them?
I think number one, only because I think there'd be some questions as to the addition of the language would be dealt with, and I would ask you to handle that.
Yeah, I think the appointment of personnel, since there's so many TBDs, I don't know how we can add those to a consent agenda now.
Okay, so one and six, we're...
Seven. Seven.
I'm sorry, seven. No, six. Seven's all dead.
Well, you don't want to pull seven out, too, just because it is listing TBD as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's always depending on the program, if it gets initiated.
I know, but in personnel, right now, almost everyone has a TBD in there.
Everyone of those has a TBD, yeah.
I mean, I don't see how we can add something with TBD to a consent agenda that's like a blank sheet.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so that means we're going one, six, and seven. All right, and then items two?
No, not six or seven.
There are actually, there are actually names in there for all dead, they just haven't been made public yet. We can put that on the consent.
So one and six would be on the, not on the consent agenda.
So consent agenda consists of two, three, four, five, seven, and eight. And then...
As long as there's no TBDs in it.
No TBDs, yeah, like you said. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Spicuzzo, we'll move that forward with that. All right, no discussion? Okay, Mr. Spicuzzo, facilities.
Yeah, facilities and services, again, only one item. I just said that for your benefit, Darren.
Thank you very much, Russ, I appreciate it.
The item up for discussion is the purchase of a replacement barrier gates at the high school. These replacement barrier gates will limit traffic during school days, but will not impact traffic on Church Road. We have the required number of bidders on the project? There were three quotes, the lowest is Red Rock Fence at 4515.
Where is this gate, where is this gate going?
The gates are, one's going right on the, right at the entrance to the circle coming from Spencer Family YMCA, and the other is replacing one of the automated gates that is not working anymore.
These are going to be all the automated gates to circle also?
These are both manual swing gates.
So these are like the orange gates?
Yes.
Okay. And no plan of moving the orange gate from the Broad Street side down to the end of the property?
With speaking with our police force, they like where that one is, they don't like where the one is near the Spencer Family YMCA, hence the one going near the circle.
Okay, all right, so obviously consulting with them, thank you. Any other discussion?
When is this going to be done?
As soon as this gets approved, I'm going to, stuff like this typically is about four to six weeks to get manufactured and then installation after that.
We're looking at Thanksgiving, we're about to get it done.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Christensen, Bonds Committee.
So we have nine items under there. The first three are the standard monthly transactions. I'm not going to go into detail if anybody have any questions on those as you look through. On number four, Doug, maybe could you explain to us a little bit about the agreement here with Lois Johnson?
This is an agreement with your before and after-school daycare program with Lois Johnson. We made it a three-year agreement instead of doing it every year. It really follows the same format that you've had before. It doesn't specify buildings. Right now, I think they're running it in three buildings. I think it's Washington, Ben Franklin, and Memorial, but we didn't specify buildings because we thought it might change from year to year. But it really mirrors the agreements you've had in the past with Lois Johnson. They pay you a rental fee, but I think it's $10 an hour for each building they're in every, you know, every day. So, I mean, it adds up to about $5,000 or $6,000 you get in rental income, but more importantly, it allows you to run that program for parents for before and after-school programs. This does not do the extended kindergarten program or anything like that. They're running that off-site this year.
Okay. Any other questions on that? I had another question on the acceptance of donation, just really, I was surprised on that one to see there's a student from Seneca Valley who's going to be building a bench, I mean, that's...
Turnup.
What's that?
Turnup.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just, I'm kind of curious, okay.
Yes, you know, it's not...
Oh, okay, I see, it's in, yeah, I just didn't read down. Okay, no, it's nice, very nice. Any other questions on these?
I'd like to call member number eight, congratulations, Mr. McCoslin.
One more committee, you're on.
And I don't like to bring up other things, but does anyone have any questions on number nine? That's a little different than what you've seen in the past.
But they did see one.
Well, no, they saw the other one, which was the fund balance commitment, but this is an adjustment to the capital reserve fund balance.
If you want to...
Sure, I'll be happy to. What happened is, as I'm getting ready to do the budget, I start to look at all the line items, and I was a little curious why I didn't see debt service for your copiers, a lease agreement, so I had to do some digging, and I discovered that you had paid for your copiers four years ago outright, and you just have a maintenance agreement on your copiers, but you made that payment from the capital reserve. And under the school code, copiers are not considered capital assets, they're operating assets, and you cannot make that purchase from the capital reserve. Your auditors did adjust for that in that year, they caught it and adjusted it correctly, so it showed up in your general fund, but this fund balance still remained in your capital reserve and should not be sitting there for copiers or for band uniforms, because those items are operating assets, they are not capital assets, and you can't purchase it with capital reserve funds. So this fund balance commitment just simply moves it from those commitments to future capital projects in the district, so that's all it's really doing. But you can't classify it that way because your auditor and school code will not permit it.
But are you, here's the thing, I remember Buzzy telling us about this for like five years, Russ, you maybe remember for longer, that that was the place where he's going to earmark it, okay? Do we have a place to earmark band uniforms in some other park?
You would have to...
Even if it's on the capital park?
You would have to leave that in your general fund and commit it within your general fund for those purposes or assign it. You can do one or the other. Administratively, we can assign it for those purposes, or we can, you can do formal action by the board and commit that fund balance for those purposes. So you can do it, but it would have to happen within your general fund.
Yeah, I think that the one thing we need to do is assign that in our general fund. We had assignments there before, now we need to assign it.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We can do that as part of the budget process, too.
I agree.
We've been doing similar things for like the turf fields, but that is capital.
The turf fields are permitted because that's a capital project, that's part of your facility, so that's an okay commitment and that still exists within your capital reserve fund.
Okay, that's a good catch.
I agree with Barry, just particularly because our general fund balance, our unassigned and uncommitted funds are going to be diminishing over the next couple of years. We don't want to see those funds go out the door with and get caught in a bind.
And Doug, I don't know where we are with this, but you and I had a conversation about the budgetary reserve for those items?
Well, I think that's a discussion for when we start our budget meetings, you can establish some budgetary reserve on an annual basis for unexpected items that may come up. I noticed you don't do that in your budget, but that's something we can talk about.
Like, would that cover band and would that...
No, I think he's talking about long-term savings over years, so that when it comes time to replace those band uniforms, there's money set aside to do that.
Yeah, and I think that that's, yeah, I think that 186 or whatever part was allocated that band uniforms, I think that had been a multi-year accrual.
You can see that being accrued over years.
I think it's happening every year. I think it's happening every year.
Right.
Right. I think it was like 5,000 a year is what I was seeing.
Correct. Five to 7,000 a year was taken out of the band music budget and allocated for that, is my understanding when I talked with the music department about a year ago.
Right. So, we'll have to make those assignments within your general fund.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Any other questions on finance?
All right.
Can I first move to the consent agenda?
Yeah, move them all to the consent agenda.
No objections? At this time, Policy Committee, Mrs. Turner?
Yeah, up for the third reading, Policy Number 200, Enrollment in District, Policy 208, Withdrawal of School, Policy 222, Tobacco Use and Vaping Products for Students, Policy 323, Tobacco and Vaping Products for Staff. So, all implemented, all that were read on the first reading will be done on the final reading. There's been no change.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, I'm good with that, but on the board's board docs, can we include the attachments so we can read them over again? The proposed policies?
They should have just pulled over.
That's a good fact, yeah.
Mr. Nagel, you can go to the website, and they're under the board. They're called Future Policies to Be Considered or something.
Can't minimize that.
Okay, but can we have them attached to the agenda?
Yeah.
Can't minimize. Okay, so there's nothing else? At this time, I don't believe public comments are completed. Mrs. Dolby, do you see any more comment on public comments?
I have not seen any more, so hopefully...
Good. At that time, we move on to board comments. Mrs. Roll?
No, I have no other comment.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza?
Thank you, Mr. Rojek. My only comment tonight would be to thank all the people who attended the Facility and Services committee meetings. We put in quite a bit of time. Mr. Christensen, Mr. Nagel, Mr. Fears, Dr. Jay, Janet, Dr. Imperio. Did I miss anybody? But I really appreciate the effort that everybody put in. It was... Leonard, I forgot about Leonard. My wife asked if we could call you Buzzie. Just because of the Leonard part.
I got you.
But thank you, everyone, for the effort you put in, and I think it's well worth it, and I do truly appreciate it. It was tough. I mean, it's a lot of information in a short period of time, but thank you very much.
And thank you for the whole committee and their efforts, and we'll discuss that next week. Mr. Christensen?
No, I don't have anything further.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nagel?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh-Turner?
No, I'm good for today.
Mr. Scowzo? Mr. McGregor?
No, I have no comment.
I have no comment. Mrs. Dolby?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, on that note, folks?
Motion adjourned.
Motion second?
Second.
Vote. All favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.